Welcome to our work session for our first meeting in April. Any questions on the agenda? Or comments? How about the consent agenda? No? Okay, that takes us to... Six, I assume we'll be doing those on Thursday. Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir.
And what about eight?
Yeah, Mr. Partey will do those on Thursday as well.
Okay.
Takes us two hours.
Nine?
I spoke to Dr. Burns maybe two, three weeks ago and after discussing with Mr. Bridgeman, implementing a school attire code for Holloway High School. And Mr. Bridgeman is proposing that they have, that students and apparently the faculties obviously invested in the idea too, have three separate colored shirts and maybe three separate colored pants. He's done his homework, like for example, I think we talked about blue, I don't know, a couple of other colors pants, we talked about black, khaki and another color, brown or something, I believe. But at any rate, we'd like to do that. I know they're real excited. I think he's made provisions for kids that may not be able to afford the uniforms. He got a grant from Richard Siegel Foundation. He'll put together a closet and I just really, for kids that may have an issue, I think also with his desire to get the word out quick so when kids buy their clothes this summer in lieu of buying something other than a, a uniform for school, they can buy that uniform. So, I'd like to encourage on Thursday night to approve that. And, Mr. Bridgeman, if you want to say anything with regards to that, step up, stand up, step up.
Do you step up the microphone so that it being here?
Yeah, that's right. What I'm telling you is...
Welcome?
Well, thanks for inviting me, Mr. Gill. I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. I do want to just kind of detail a little bit because it is different for, for us. I did bring kind of my, some of my staff with me and they're kind of dressed in...
So, they're modeling tonight?
They're modeling.
Okay.
Kind of what we're proposing. Just want to start by saying, I know a lot of you have been very good to visit Holloway graduation, so you kind of know what we do. But we take students who in many cases are not complete, they're, they're struggling in a sense, some are behind. We're kind of the safety net. And we're taking students and we're trying to piece them together and build productive citizens. And so, in that, we definitely focus on the academics, but we have to focus on the social skills that many of them are missing. And one thing that we've noticed, a lot of them are leaving us and they are not ready to go out to the workforce or to go out into universities and be productive. And part of that is just appearance, professional dress, what's appropriate. And so, that's some of the things we want to address with, I guess, our policy of appearance. We want our students to come to school and look business professional, we want them to look like they're there for a reason. Two-fold. One, so that they will get that skill when they step out into community. But second, Holloway, and those of you who have, have been and visited and been to graduation, you know, we're big on, I guess, the family, we're big on becoming one unit, having pride in yourself, having pride in your school, and part of that is your appearance. And so, since we get students from all over the county, we have Riverdale kids, we have Oakland kids, Siegel kids, we want our students to feel like they are Holloway students. And so, part of that is getting the image, having a, a school dress code that kind of causes kids to look alike, almost like having that football team. I know when I played high school football, it was nothing better than putting on that uniform and going out to battle with your teammates. And so, kind of that same old coaches analogy of, of putting on the same helmet, putting on the same uniform and going into the fight, it's kind of what we want to, to detail. I did bring kind of just a, you know, a little bit of written proposal, if you guys wanted to look at it, we could kind of show you. It's not hashed and st- it's not etched in stone, it's kind of just something for you to see what our route was, if we got approval, we would definitely cross all of our Ts and dot all, cross all of our, our Ts and dot a Is with the final proposal. But we do have that if you want to take the time to look at it.
Please.
Also, I brought my teachers, they, they're a lot better than me at sometimes modeling what I, I want done. I have a vision, but I hire good people and they put it into action. So, they can definitely address kind of the parameters of what we wanted to do.
Mr. Tackett's coming.
Thank you.
And I brought with me Ms. Smith, she's my department chair for our math department. I also brought Ms. Suppicon, who is very unique. She is a business teacher, but she is also a mom, she has a daughter there, and she also is a former student of Holloway. So, she's a graduate. So, she's also my teacher's parent, also, and Ms. Wells, she's one of my senior staff, she's been there through, I guess, three administrations. So, she kind of, I got a good spectrum of education, I guess, to speak to. And I just want to ask a few questions.
Good evening. I will talk about the shirts and the tops. We would like all of the tops to be, have a collar, give me a button-down style like what I have, or just a polo-style shirt, as long as it has a collar on it and a solid color. And the colors we've chosen are blue and white to represent Holloway school colors right now. And we also chose red and black to represent Holloway school colors in the past, so the history of Holloway. And we will eventually have polo shirts with our school's crest on it. So, those will be shirts that they could purchase at a later point.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. As for the pants, like Mr. Bridgeman said, slacks, black, navy, khaki. And then, we also thought about implementing shorts for the boys, if they wanted to wear a cargo short, short and maybe a polo, that might make them feel not so formal. So, that would be another option. And like Mr. Bridgeman said, my daughter is a freshman at Holloway, and I told her about the idea of the dress code and she was excited about it. And she said, this is going to take a lot of the guesswork out in the morning of what to pick out. And she also said it's going to allow all the students there to really feel like, you know, one, so that, you know, some of the lower-income students aren't really, you know, known as much if everyone has to wear similar things. So, from a teacher's standpoint, I really like it. And then, also from a student's, my daughter liked it.
Okay.
As dean of students, one of the things that I do is address dress code issues every day, and that's really time-consuming, it's distracting for the students who may be out of dress code as we have it currently. Probably the biggest thing that I could say as far as the dress code goes, every year when we have a, a job fair at school, and we will have fifty to sixty vendors and businesses from around town that come to, you know, offer our students what they can as far as what to expect in the job market and that sort of thing, they complete a survey at the end of that job fair. And consistently, over the last several years, the one thing that they ask us to address with our students is their ability to dress professionally because our students don't know how to do that. So, that is one of the things that we hope to accomplish by having the dress code.
Okay, great.
Any questions we can answer?
Have any questions? We looked at this system-wide, what, several years ago? And we found that people had strong opinions both ways, didn't we? I believe that was your baby?
Yeah, unfortunately. I'm still scarred. But as far as the parents, have, have they bought into it? Have, have you notified them that this is coming?
I'll be honest, we have not done, done a blast to everyone because we, I've learned, I better get permission before I do that. We have polled somewhat some parents, we've said, hey, you know, what do you think about this? What would be your objections? But we haven't made a, because the moment I put it out to everyone, then they're going to see it's, we're doing it and I'll have to deal with the fallout.
Well, the difference also is you're, you're a choice school.
We are choice.
Rather than, you know, system-wide. So, I, I think that gives you a little more leeway than...
And we have been gradually moving since I've been the administrator. We've kind of gradually made steps toward this direction. We've gone from no dress code to completely no dress code at all, I guess, when I first took over, to we're probably the, the strictest dress code for a high school, other than the alternative schools now. Now, our students have to wear solid-colored shirts, no riding, no holes in the jeans, no rips, those things. We've already moved to that direction. So, this is kind of the next step. So, my parents wouldn't be shocked, most of them know that's kind of my vision.
Yes, sir.
But we have not polled and brought them in yet because I want to make sure this is a approval of the board first.
Other questions? Aaron?
In the preparation, has there been any student input in, in your thinking on this?
We have spoken to students. What we would like to do is if we get approval, we will bring, we'll have a committee made of students, parent and teachers to finalize what we would do. We have just kind of polled students, what colors do you like? How do you think it would, how would you, how would it affect you? Would you like having a dress code? Those kind of things, talk to the leadership and the student body. But we haven't finalized the committee until we get the okay.
Again, just for perspective, remind me of the choice to attend, to attend Holloway High School.
Sure.
What are the criteria that bring a student there?
Well, they come from our walks of life, I'll say that. And they come for various reasons. I guess the thing I say to everyone, we're just a safety net and we catch students with, with different issues. I catch students who are behind. A lot of, I guess, the bulk of our students are, find themselves reaching the latter part of their, their high school career and they're behind in credits. So, they need a system that will allow them to catch up, that might put a little more extra emphasis on them, a little more extra resources in their hands. We do have students who just socially don't function well in a school of two thousand. They need a smaller environment, they need a smaller classroom. We have parents who just have that anxiety of having their children in the metropolis of the huge high school. So, parents encourage their kids to try. We have a lot of siblings who have had their older brothers, older sisters, cousins, uncles go through Holloway and they know the system and they just want to be there. And so, they come for various reasons, but I guess our biggest draw are small classrooms, our dedicated staff, teachers are, are very well-versed in being able to pull students through for whatever their, I guess, reason might be. So, they come with applications, students have to apply. They come in for an interview, they sit down for an interview and then they go through an orientation if we accept them. And, and most students we accept if we can. The only students that we typically won't accept are students who there's no way we can possibly get them to the finish line. You know, if they're going to be a dropout, then we try not to take them just because we have the same stipulations, we really just can't afford to take those.
What issues, and perhaps the dean of students could address, what issues do you currently see with the dress code that you now have?
There are a lot of the, the students, and we have students sitting there laughing, decision-making, and we came up with that. And the goal was to have as few distractions in classrooms as possible. And so, that we're, you know, some of the girls don't understand what it means to dress modestly. So, we've tried to, to incorporate that into our dress code. Probably the, the bigger issues are, you know, a child comes in, maybe wants to wear something totally outlandish or, you know, out-honk and p-shirt, that kind of thing. And, and we just, I bought clothes there and then we put on p-shirts that just got HHS on them that...
Yeah, let, let, let me piggyback that, Mr. Holliday. I mean, it, it, from one perspective, it separates the has and the have-nots. Some kids can dress better than others because they have the financial means to do so. Secondly, matter of fact, I almost piloted one through Mr. Watson when I was principal of Cedar Grove, and we had about seventy-five percent of the parents were in favor of it. But also, it does eliminate the principal having to intervene when their kids have questionable attire. I mean, I think those are two of the best-selling points and...
Well, an example, now, when, when students come in with something that's inappropriate, all we, you know, typically do, ask them to turn it over or we'll give them a shirt. But it doesn't drive home that image of, I'm coming to schoo- come to school for a purpose. I'm coming to school professionally dressed because I want to, I guess, launch myself into the next stage in life, my, my career, my work, my, the schooling. And so, it does, I guess, we, our dress code now does address some of the things of, hey, don't come in with your Budweiser shirt on. But it still hasn't made that next step of, this is what it takes to be successful as, as a citizen in Rutherford County.
Great.
Has it been an issue on the cost? Obviously, you could get this in bulk and it should be some saving, but what is it how does it compare?
Cost-wise, what I had these young ladies do, they went to Walmart this afternoon and burnt and bought both tops, I think, this top, both tops came from Walmart. Twelve dollars is about a piece, is average. So, if you were to cost that out over five or seven, if a student wanted to go and purchase those, that's just, if they went without the, you know, our crest shirts with polo shirts without crest, you could go to Walmart and probably outfit yourself for two hundred dollars for the, for the year as far as bottoms and tops. So, I think cost-wise, it's very cost-efficient for a parent.
Could be even lower, really.
If we bought, we bought in bulk. We, we've looked online and we've gone through wholesale distributors, just pricing. You can buy polo shirts as low as six dollars, five to six dollars for a shirt if you buy in bulk. So, it is, that is, you know, cost-effective. And again, I, it's all on your, on your paper, we, we have our secured money where we can take care, we think of an indigent fund for parents who truly, this would be, I guess, a hardship for them.
Any other questions? Tim?
Buying from the faculty, I, I would think that one of the issues that high school principal or any principal faces is, is, because ultimately, the faculty will be the ones on the front edge of, of having to enforce this and deal with it. And if, if they do not, then you're stuck with having to pull them out of the hallways as they come by and so forth. I, I think that's key to any dress code issue that, that the principal gets buy-in from the faculty, that they're, they are on board, they are willing to, to do what it takes in those first two weeks. Because once you get established, I think you'll be in great shape.
Yes, sir.
So, kind of address that a little bit.
Well, I, I, I learned that early on, again, and you can, you can attest to that as a principal, if you don't get the teachers behind you, you're in trouble. So, I, that was the first thing I would do. We talked about our vision and, and we've done that from the very beginning, talked about where we want to go, where we want the students to be, where we want the school to be. And so, it's just part of our gradual steps we've been taking as far as buying. My teachers, I, you guys that have been principals, you know, I don't have a hundred percent. I don't have a hundred percent of the faculty that are, will, will say they're a hundred percent behind it. But I say ninety percent of my faculty are gung-ho, ready to go and see the need and they are excited about it. So, they, I've turned it over to them and they're just ready to go.
Anything else? Aaron?
If this were voluntary, how would it be inhibited?
If it was voluntary with high school students, it wouldn't happen. High school students are not the type, it's like anything, it doesn't matter what the rule or whatever the procedure or the policy is, if you talk to a teenager, they don't want to do it, just honestly. I mean, there we have some that honestly, once we get going, they won't have a problem, they'll be, they'll be excited about it. But anytime you say it's a voluntary deal with high school kids, we haven't been very successful, honestly. I think parents would try to push it, but as long as there's a loophole where we said, you don't have to, then the majority are not going to do it. Because if they, you know, we, we harp on these type things every day, we talk to kids. Every time I see a student that is inappropriately dressed for, I think, society or for their professional career after, I always pull them to the side and say, hey, you know, if you were to pull your pants up, if you were to, you know, tuck your shirt in, when you go on that job interview, you got a lot better chance of getting that job. Same student would come back the next day looking the same. So, sometimes we need a little enforcement behind it just to kind of get them urged in the right direction.
There's some things you just don't give choices.
That's right.
I think for this program, or this is, it's an alternative school. I don't like the, I don't, using the word alternative here is, does not have the same meaning in this case as it does for two of our other schools. Because a lot of these students are there with a bright future ahead if they can just be pointed in the right direction and given a little bit of direction from the standpoint of professionalism and looking for a brighter day. And I think this is a wonderful place to start this. And I hope Thursday night that the little details and things will be well on their way because I, I think it's a great, great opportunity for those students, that school, and even for our system.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Mr. Bridgeman. Ladies, thank you all for coming and...
Thank you, I'm happy.
We'll take this up on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Tim?
Facility A, Homer Pitter Campus School Change Order. And according to the contract between Middle Tennessee State University and the Rutherford County Board of Education, we have additional work to be completed by August twelfth, August two thousand twelve at Homer Pitter Campus School. This work includes pointing and patching the parapet wall around the roof from the coping down to the bottom of the stone band under the corning and repairing the roof drains in the courtyard near the playground. Roof drains will be rerouted horizontally with eight-inch PVC lines to the corner of the building facing East Lyle Street. Approximately twenty-foot of foundation wall will be exposed as waterproof. Parapet work cost is seventy-two thousand dollars and the downspout rework cost is twelve thousand five hundred dollars, for a total of eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Work to be accomplished to the change order, the existing contract with Hart Mechanical funding will be a complimentary issue in the amount of forty-five thousand and the balance of thirty-nine thousand five hundred will come from the fiscal year maintenance fund balance. Recommend the approved change order to the Hart Mechanical, amount of eighty-four thousand five hundred for work at Homer Pitter Campus School.
Discussion.
Pretty much puts this to bed for the, as far as the...
Yeah, I think this is it, just closes it up, wraps it up, yeah.
A long journey, hadn't it?
Sure has. What, five years, I guess, had to be, four or five years, I believe?
At least.
Yeah.
Other discussion? Okay, B?
Proposed expansion Lot 21 Rosemont. Mr. Jeffrey Hollinshead has a contract to purchase Lot 21 Rosemont in Smyrna behind Stewart's Borough Elementary School. He has requested the purchase of the twenty-foot section of the property that Rutherford County School Board of Education owns. Behind this lot has made an offer of fifteen hundred dollars. Recently, the board sold a small piece of property like this on Lot 18, Rosemont to Smyrna, pardon me, to Mr. and Ms. Bill Van Mullin to accommodate a pool they were installing. Twenty, the Lot 21 parcel is point-one-one acres and is of no use for Rutherford County Board of Education. The school system proposed selling the point-one-one acre parcel to Mr. Hollinshead fifteen hundred dollars on the condition that Mr. Hollinshead, they all survey cost and cost necessary for the conveyance and will recommend that. Again, it's the same issue as last time, I don't know how you found out about it, we didn't go out and publish information that we're selling that land, but it's, it's absolutely no use to us.
Discussion? Great.
Mr. Hollinshead has been a good supporter of, of the systems, of both the county and in the, of high school and the whole county.
Yes, he has.
He's, he's done very well in his business and he, he has shared it.
He's the guy, he's owned Smyrna Ready, uh, concrete, I think Gary said they've probably given us forty to one hundred twenty thousand dollars with the concrete, hadn't he? The business. Yeah, he's been a good steward for us.
That's on a yearly basis?
Yeah. And I think this is his son, actually, is building the house.
Don?
How much more of this dog league is left?
I think there are probably maybe three to six lots that are still on that.
Are along that line right there. So, we still have some area there that we'll be responsible for maintaining.
Well, I think most of those lot owners have taken ownership, but within our respect to keep it cleaned up.
Or squatted. I guess we just know that.
For the protection of their own property then.
And we still, there's a small drainage ditch on one edge of that and we're trying to keep that drainage ditch so that it doesn't, nothing interferes with our drainage when it's built in.
Other discussion? Okay, Levin?
Financial matters. Mr. Scotty Karun of Xcel Energy will present a proposal to replace one million four hundred sixty-one thousand thirteen dollars in our lower-efficiency commotion sink. This proposal should produce major savings in our water and sewer bills. This project will be funded by the Rutherford County, issuing a seven-year note on bonds that would be paid off with the general purpose school funds. This is the funding mechanism we use for lighting and light sensors that have been completed. Projective savings in our water and sewer bills will cover our interest in principal costs in about eight years. And we, just for everyone's information, we've really devoted a lot of energy towards energy-efficient projects. We've installed geothermal heating and cooling, smaller building envelopes, energy-efficient lighting, light sensors, repurified irrigation for the ball fields, heating and cooling upgrades at several schools, energy-efficient window projects and changed to white roofing membrane to reduce solar gain. Mr. Partey and Ms. Sam have been working with Mr. Karun and this is just the next, from all our perspective, natural step towards reducing costs, in particular down the pipe because after the eight years is up, that is saving for the twenty or thirty or fifty years the buildings are there. And I know Mr. Karun went around, I think Mr. Partey, with Mr. Jackie Holden, was it?
Jackie and...
Tommy Vines.
And visit buildings and I think they all came back impressed with what they had to offer. So, I'll turn it over to you and you can tell the board what's, what we're in store for if we decide to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. It's good to see everybody again. This is, by way of review, we did the lighting project and the control project. Lighting project was back in oh-five and the control, lighting control project was in two thousand and ten. The, those projects will, are, are paying off. The original lighting project generates eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars a year of electricity savings and its last payment comes off here in two thousand and twelve. The control project generates a hundred and eighty-six thousand a year of savings and it, it pays off in two thousand and fifteen. So, those are both similar projects to what I'm going to show you tonight. And it, it's similar in that they pay for themselves out of savings with no capital expenditure from the district. So, what we're talking about now, just in summary though, on those lighting projects, we've, we're up to about five-point-four million of savings since oh-five. Very good use of the money that the county commission is, is giving you. Now, let's talk water. The next best payback thing a school system can do is water conservation. And what we're talking about doing is all of your inefficient faucets, replacing toilets, inefficient toilets and showerheads. So, we're, just as in electricity with the lighting, we were affecting the wattage that you're using, now we're affecting the water that you're using. This will save off several sources, it'll save off your water and sewer bill, it'll save off of your, you'll be heating less water, so it'll save off gas or electric, depending on which school you're at and whether you're being, whether it's heated with gas or, or electricity. And it'll save off main, it'll, it'll have some definite maintenance savings. We mentioned Tommy Vines, he went with us for the month that we went around and, and measured all of your, all of your fixtures and their water usage. You've got seven or so plumbers covering forty-five schools. That's pretty efficient there too. Y'all getting, y'all getting, you got a great guy there and great staff that's doing all they can. But part of your savings, a small piece of your savings will be from not buying material and, and keeping old toilets going. So, from the plumbing side, from the, that division of the district, they're most excited about getting new fixtures and, and not having maintenance on those. So, so what we're talking about with faucets is, is taking all those faucets, putting aerators on them where you're going from two gallons per minute down to a half a gallon per minute. Taking all the toilets that are three-point-five gallon flush, per flush toilets or more, down to one-point-six gallons per flush. And the showerheads where they're, where, where they're currently, all your showers are at three or two and a half gallons per minute, taking those down to one and a half. There won't be any pressure loss or any difficulty showering, it's just, it's just slowing the flow going in and the pressure will still be the same. We looked at six thousand and nine fixtures throughout your school. Um, uh, we looked at six thousand and nine fixtures throughout your schools, uh, some of which were efficient. I'd say uh, it percentage wise, roughly a third, thirty-five percent of those are efficient, leaving about forty-one hundred fixtures that need upgrading. Um, uh, no urinals are in the project, just your faucets, toilets, and your showerheads. Um, you've got a packet, I think, in front of you. Let's look at the, what the hard numbers would look like. If you look at that first page of the executive summary, the cost of doing this project, and just like the lighting project, we're not asking you to put up any money. But uh, the cost would be a million four sixty-one. That'll generate two hundred and three thousand a year of utility savings. Uh, maintenance savings, a little piece of this, is about nineteen thousand seven hundred for a total annual savings of two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Now, talking with uh, Mr. Sandig and, and everybody, we decided to limit the project to a seven-year payoff. Our company, as a worst-case scenario, if you don't have any other money, uh, would finance this at three point nine percent for seven years. And that payment would be two hundred and forty thousand versus the two hundred and twenty thousand of savings, leaving the district with a contribution of sixteen thousand nine eighty-three a year for seven years. And that's what we would guarantee the district. Now, much like uh, much like the, the lighting project, we've looked at any grant money that might be available, any zero percent money. And as a worst-case fallback, we're showing you what we would finance it for. So that's, that's your deal. For a contribution of a little less than seventeen thousand, you get the all-new plumbing fixtures and all the water conservation uh, devices and over forty-one hundred fixtures in the district. Uh, we guarantee it, similar to the same way we guarantee the, the lighting savings. By measuring, we've already measured the flow of the fixtures now. And then we would, after the retrofit or replacement of these fixtures, we would remeasure the flow. And the only other variables are what you're being charged and how much you use it. So we've got, we've got those variables agreed to on, by national standards. We've analyzed your bills to see exactly what you're paying for. So the only real measurement that needs to be done is the difference in pre-flow and post-flow. And we're guaranteeing you under that formula that we will, we will reach that two hundred and two hundred and twenty-three thousand savings, which we believe is conservative. But that's all that we're willing to guarantee. Uh, everything's new and warranted. Flipping on through it. Everything's new and warranted. Uh, we, we would perform any work on anything that was done in an un, a workmanlike manner, but we wouldn't anticipate that to be anything. Um, uh, other than that, we would leave material with the district. So if you do have anything malfunction, you would have extras readily available. Just like in the lighting where we left the extra components in the, in the maintenance area. Um, not a first rodeo. You know, I've been doing this for about twenty years now. And the natural progression for a district is to take the, the best payback savings things you can do. And Mr. Gill, I think, named off several of those. But lighting is the number one thing you can do. And water conservation is the number two thing. And as around the country, as water becomes more scarce and, and uh, areas are fighting over water and water rights are becoming more of an issue, I think that'll continue to grow. But even at the, even where we are right now, you have an excellent uh, water project at a six and a half year payback that we're willing to guarantee. Installation-wise, it would be very similar to how we did nights and weekends. But we're really looking at about a four-month installation, so it's a pretty labor-intensive. And that's the general overview. Be happy to entertain questions.
Okay, questions? This is a lot of information for us to digest.
Well, my, my initial thought is not only is the savings we're looking at, it's also been a good citizen to, to, to our country. I mean, it, water, it's become a commodity that is hard for us to believe because we see it flow very freely, but it's a, it's a commodity across the world. People fight them.
Until you don't have it.
And so I think we need to do everything we can to be good citizens as well. Is save ourselves some money on top. That's not a bad deal.
Again, we found a way to not hit you. And we, we are asking for a little under seventeen thousand a year contribution under this financing plan. If uh, and I think that's what we'd be asking the county commission to allow you to do. Uh, this is all subject to them funding the, the deal anyway. But uh, if there's any better money available through the county commission, that would give, that payback would get a little better.
Terry.
Just, just curious, how do you, how do you calculate your, your maintenance savings?
That is based on the, a, the age of what you got, how many of what you got. And a, using a twenty percent uh, uh, life, useful life gone out of what you got and when you'll have to replace that, some of that stuff. Uh, listen, it's a rough number. One way to do that might be to look at what you're actually spending in all your bills, uh, which may be more than one year or less than a year. But that's, that's a good feel for what it should be.
Do we have a lot of old stuff that will soon need to be replaced, Gary?
There's quite a bit of it. We've made a lot of progress and replaced quite a few items throughout. In the, the full report, he shows uh, like our newer schools, a lot of them already have an efficient one point six gallon per flush commode and those kind of things. So we started replacing those. But you get into some of the older schools, we've still got a lot of old fixtures that will really benefit us to do, replace those and also tackle the maintenance load off of them to keep them up and running.
Yeah, un, unlike the lighting project where you want to standardize the one bulb pretty much everywhere. Where you're efficient now water-wise, there is no need to, to touch those fixtures at the newer schools. Uh, and we tested every one of them. So if there was, if there were savings that would, that would justify reasonable payback, it's in here.
Aaron.
Installing aerators, changing showerheads, is it a complete toilet changeout?
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's, the, the toilets are the complete china and flush valves. Everything from the wall out.
Why no urinals?
Because the payback's not even good.
Okay.
They, they, most of your urinals are one point five already.
Okay.
And to be honest with you, we've probably all been to a flushless one before. Not good. So, so, but, but from efficiency standpoint, you're already there on the urinals.
Okay.
Don.
Um, our new schools were engineered for septic system with that's smaller flow. Our older schools were not engineered that way. If we reduce the flow for wastewater, are we going to start having problems with the sewer system? Is that, I know some of, some of these were designed years and years ago with so, so much water.
Really the slope on sewer pipe, for instance, uh, in my, you know, career, even, has been a quarter inch per foot on the smaller pipe. And you get up into a larger pipe, you can get down to an eighth inch per foot. Or if you get up to a really huge pipe, you can get down to almost level in the water flow to it. So, you know, I can't see it being a problem in most of it. Because everything we've got is falling down and the new stuff put in order, the old stuff put in order.
So, so those guidelines haven't changed over the years, basically. That's, quarter is what we used to put in.
Okay.
On the, she toward the back where it talks about the frequency of use per occupant. How, how did you calculate that? I know there's a difference at the different levels, but I notice even between schools at the same level, there, there are differences.
You, you, that's, that's a good question, Dr. Burns. We looked at all your bills. We took the national studies of what, what they say in elementary kid, how many flushes a day and how many per hour. Uh, and blended that with the actual usage at each school. And that's why some of those numbers are different. So this was, so we backed conservatively off of what national usage would say to, to blend that so that it more matches what your actual usage is there. For example, Rock, uh, Rock Creek's not included for any upgrades. Because your usage at that school is so little that, that we can't, and the, the flows were, were low, but you had some stuff that you would think would need, you know, you'd think every school would have something. Rock Creek doesn't have any either. They're misbilling you, but the, the bottom line is there's some savings there.
What's she talking about, Rock Creek? Give me Stewart's Creek.
No, Rock.
Rock Springs.
Rock Springs.
Rock Springs.
Oh, Rock Springs, excuse me, Rock Springs.
Rock Springs.
L N, middle's on there, yeah.
Rock Springs Elementary. We, we analyzed all of it. So again, what, those, those usages are the national average conservatively moved when blended with your actual bills.
Well, at Oakland, they're going every two and a half hours, but at Riverdale, they're only going once every five hours.
Mm-hmm. Sounds about right.
And Mr. Nolan not letting his dudes go to the restroom is that, or they're not flushing? I mean, I don't know. And as a Riverdale graduate, I don't want to imply that it's a lather.
Yeah.
That's a tight ship out there.
I tell you what. I've heard this.
That determines the degree of grumminess, I think.
And then on the per gallon cost, is that just the difference between C U D and the different city systems on the next page?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, we, we looked at the actual bills at each school. For each school, you've got different providers. Uh, those are the actual rates for those bills of those, each particular school.
C U D's twice as much. I mean, and.
Yeah, C U D's just very expensive. How, how many water providers we have? C U D's Smyrna. We do anything out of Nashville and Laverne. They have, Laverne have their own water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you. I've got that somewhere. But uh, yeah, different rates, different locations, different providers.
Other, Grant.
I was gonna ask Mr. Clardy, if my memory serves me correctly, I don't know if any real difficulties you ever brought back to us during the changeover and the installations, did you, it run into, it didn't run into any major problems on your lighting and other?
No major problems with standard construction type issues that always come with every job, but nothing of major concern.
Any other discussion? Well, there's a lot to look at here, so take some time uh, between now and Thursday. Appreciate Scotty, that, that presentation.
Dr. Burns, what, what is the proposed action?
Uh, there's a separate, we couldn't get it on the agenda. We've been studying this for, for four weeks. But it's uh, to approve the energies, XL Energy is one point four six million. Energy-efficient water upgrade proposal continued on approval of financing by the Rust County Commission.
Okay, so this would not be part of our budget. It would be a separate entity approved by the commission?
I think it would either be probably borrowed and uh, they need to go to market and borrow it or we would uh, borrow it probably through their company at three point nine. The market rate is about two point three. Uh, we could use fund balance, but we don't think that's the sage thing to do right now because we got Stewart's Creek to open. So uh, it's either go to market or probably fund it through there.
Yeah, that's, just on that, Mr. Gill, that, that, you got some, the, the lighting piece is paying off this year. But then again, you build new schools, so you need, you, you need all that savings. You, you already got it accounted for. But you do have savings that are paying off from previous projects that would swamp the, you know, this deal, this little one. Uh, so.
I think your point is we've saved enough. Now we're into, how much are we saving in utilities over what we started? Uh, I mean, we were paying eight hundred and some odd thousand a year.
About a million.
We're no longer paying.
About a million dollars a year.
Yeah, the year that we're saving through our energy.
But you're expanding at the same time and building more buildings and spending that savings on new buildings. So, but had you not done the other projects, you'd be paying a million dollars more than you're paying today.
Well, the commission is starting to talk about us thinking outside the box and doing different things. I think this is a good example of that sort of action.
Uh, I think they appreciate you making best use of the money they give you.
You gonna reimburse us for all those testing, those flushes you did during testing?
Nope.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Uh, number twelve.
Okay, approval of contract between Riverdale High School and Athletic Services Plus for fundraising. Riverdale High School requests approval to enter into an agreement with Athletic Services Plus to raise funds for installation of artificial turf for the football field. Any funds pledged for the project will be deposited into a restricted school account. The money in this, uh, the monies in this account will be transferred to the Riverdale Quarterback Club as needed to pay costs for the project. Copy of the agreement has been provided to board members for review. And we're gonna recommend you did that. We've had uh, uh, Ms. Nolan's here, Coach Adalot here and uh, Mr. McLeod and I met with them last week. Mr. Savick did. And we kinda scrutinized the whole proposal left there thinking it was something that we could, could do. I'd like Angel to speak to it because I'm sure that you're going to have some questions with respect to what if we don't raise them enough? How do we, do we reimburse the vendors who committed money? Uh, there'd be some borrowed money down the pike, uh, those kind of deals. Go ahead, Angel.
Uh, the contract that you have a copy of essentially lays out what this company will do as an effort to raise funds to get the project started. Um, their fee for doing the fundraising services is an initial, initial ten thousand dollars. Uh, once they have reached half the goal for the fundraising, there's an additional five percent of the, of half the goal, which is six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. If the entire goal is reached, uh, there would be another five percent of the total. Um, so those are the fees that Riverdale would incur. They have the money at this point too for the initial ten thousand dollars and the five percent of the half goal. Um, hopefully this company raises enough money to cover some of the fees on the back end. But what they will do is essentially go out and try to um, get long-term sponsorships for the field. And their business name, a company name, would go on the field, actually, their numbered spots. And so depending on what level you purchase at and for what period of time, is the amount of money that, that you would raise. Um, so they're, you know, thirty and forty thousand dollar increments over time. The idea being that they would go through this process, see what commitments that they have, uh, look at the amount of money that they were able to raise during that time, over a period of time, and then decide how much money would need to be financed to finish the project. So the board would then get a proposal for a loan agreement, much like you did in the Oakland project, um, that the Booster Club or some group of parents would secure in order to finish the project. The idea being that as this money comes in over time for the sponsorships, they would make the loan payments. And so there would be very little money, if any, um, paid back individually that you would gain that money through this fundraising ability. It would go into a school account initially, um, be transferred into a Booster Club account once the fundraising process is done. If at some point it's decided that the project is not going to go, then that money would be refunded to who had already paid.
Now, we, we actually talked to the vendor, the, the folks that would be soliciting the advertisement. And uh, I think they've had either twenty-eight or thirty-three successful experiences building a field. And there's a lot of, we're generating the, the funds to build a field. Uh, and there were a lot of things that both Ms. Nolan and uh, Coach Adalot pointed out. And uh, there's a lot of potential for letting, renting the field out. Uh, usage would be paid back to the school. It could be, I presume, put towards the project or put into football account. Uh, cuts back on water bills, cuts out on the need to mow the field in the summer. But the biggest silver lining, I think, is, and I've heard it for nine years I've been here, people calling the soccer teams, uh, uh, the JVs and others that we don't ever, we can't get a hold, we can't get the field. We can't play our games out there. And that's no longer going to be an issue, right, Coach? Okay, so that ever, there'll be more folks that will be able to use the field. Obviously, the football team would have precedent. Obviously, the football team would have precedent over usage. Uh, we thought that was a, a pretty neat thing. And we were pretty well sold that, that the funds would continually come in and it wasn't going to be an issue with people defaulting on their original commitment. Uh, guys that, that are doing this, uh, pretty articulate fellows, pretty successful businesspeople, assured us that it's not going to be an issue. And there'll be others, like say if Mr. Jernigan had a ten-year commitment at forty thousand dollars, four thousand a year, and had advertisement on the field and decided, I don't wanna do this anymore. They pull that out and somebody else is often standing there waiting to take their place. So, uh, it's not indifferent to what we did at Oakland, I don't believe.
And they've also apparently had experience, um, with some, some folks and some businesses making large contributions on the front end instead of doing it over time. So I think the hope is that you'll have a good amount of money upfront to start the project with.
And, and, and I guess if, if y'all wanna hear from Mr. Nolan or Coach Ailat, I'm sure they'd be...
Wayne.
With them being able to take someone's advertisement off the field, you know, we've had some problems over the years with vandalism to some of our, our football and baseball fields. If, if something like that happened, is this a pretty easy repair since they're able to, to remove this, the advertisements pretty quickly?
They, they've done in the past and had any problem with it.
I think the one big, big stuff-
Very rarely.
Mr. Nolan, why don't you come up? You wanna come up front and just, you all have sat here all this time, why don't you, why don't you have this chance to talk?
Yeah, they assure us that it's, it's not really an issue. They've only had a couple of places that have gone out of business and they just cut it out and they just put a brand-new panel in there. And it's not actually on the athletic surface, it's outside the boundary of the field.
So if we had a vandalism event, it'd still be inexpensive and easy to repair possibly?
It's, it's under a warranty and, uh, the company that puts the turf in, it, it's a different company from this Athletic Services Plus, the ones that do the actual installation of the field. But what they do in that case is they lay out big sections of the turf that's leftover, extra parts. And a lot of the schools, they put them on top of their buildings. That way they fade at the same rate as the field does. And if something gets messed up, they just cut that section out and they stick another section in there.
Pretty cool.
It's a pretty cool idea. I just, you know, it's something that this county will just be extremely proud of. The worst thing that I do as a principal is tell Whitworth McCannon that they can't play because it's rained the night before their game. Or Christiana Middle. You know, that stuff's important to those kids too, and they, and they deserve to play. And this field, it'll take, what is it, twelve inches, twelve inches of rain an hour? It'll, you could get twelve inches of rain in an hour and play on it an hour after it rains. It's already lined up for soccer. Soccer's not an issue. It eliminates the painting, the lining, the cutting, fertilizing. We figured it was right at thirty thousand dollars is what we spent on the field alone this past season, just trying to keep it ready and get it ready for the, uh, for the season.
Is it similar to what we have at MTSU?
It's, believe it or not, it's third generation of what they've got. So it's basically three times improved of what they've got.
Tom, would it, talk about letting outsiders rent the field. I mean, some examples of when they-
It would be similar to what Oakland does, a very indoor thing, so much per hour. You know, I envision running three little soccers going rampant in this county. I don't know if y'all know that with soccer tournaments and... And I think soccer teams are pretty much helping to pay for the thing over at Oakland. But, you know, the minute it rains anywhere in Murfreesboro, the two pretty good soccer fields, they don't want them playing on it. Well, our door's gonna be open, say, come on, get on it, let's go. Let's play on it. And it would be like an hourly rate of maybe a hundred dollars an hour. And those little guys, you could run three fields across and just have that thing going all night. The biggest benefit's gonna be to our school system and our schools, which are gonna have first dibs on, on anything. And we hadn't done it in the past and hadn't even thought about it, but I see some of the middle schools playing soccer on it also. And as far as water savings, we don't even know what the water savings is. We read some information this morning, uh, that one athletic field during the course of the season uses between five-hundred thousand and a million gallons of water for one field. And we're doing three, you know, during the course of a season. I would really be curious to see how much water savings would be. And not to mention environmentally, so I love it because it's real green. There's nothing getting washed in the Stone River, no chemicals, no fertilizer, nothing like that. So I think it's a plus. If we can pull this thing off, we'll be one of the only public schools in middle Tennessee to have it. You know, there's a few, Father Ryan and John Paul II have it, it's private schools. And then our friends down the street, the city of, uh, Maryville just put in turf at their place. I wish they'd fall off the state. Is there any way we can just chop that in?
For the record.
But anyway, I think it'd be a great thing by all. But the first thing is we want to see what, what these guys can do as far as raising money. And they've, in every occasion, they've raised over the amount of what the field cost.
What kind of timeline are you on, hopefully?
What is it, eighty days?
Eighty days to build a field. About, about two, that would be-
Two weeks' worth of planning, of, of them going out and making contacts. And they contact, you know, big-name companies pretty much.
Well, I, I guess that the, the hope is to play on that field next year?
I'd love to be on it, you know?
Okay, I mean, that's-
That, that's the plan. They say it takes about eighty days to put the field in. So it'd be close.
The, uh... Nope, lost it.
Okay. Other discussion. All right, thank you, Tom.
Appreciate y'all. Thanks.
You kept, you kept the name of that, uh, group that rented the field for the football camp?
Right.
You, I remember that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a pretty good deal there.
Yeah, that's a pretty good deal.
But they didn't know anything about the tar or anything at the time. But, hey, we'll take them up.
I think it's come back to Aaron, his question is re-
The, the ten thousand that is the initial investment, where is that money now?
It's in the Riverdale football camp. We had a pretty good year last year.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Thirteen.
Dismissed a tenured teacher. The board has been provided with a memorandum containing charges against Sylvia Ruble, who is a tenured teacher with the board. Ms. Ruble has been suspended without pay pending board action. The board sustains these charges. Ms. Ruble will be presented with a copy of the charges and a statement of her rights under Tennessee law. Recommend that you sustain the charges against Ms. Ruble as presented.
Okay, discussion. I'll find the letter under your, uh, tab there. General discussion.
Thursday night, will we have some state champion guests with us?
If they show, they've been invited. I think the bowler at Laverne High School, the girl that won in state, will be here for one. I think it's number six, is it?
Yeah, it's right there. Other discussion. Okay, Joyce has put at your desk several pieces of paper. Uh, one is the interview scheduled for next week. Which I believe is self-explanatory, so five P.M. Each night is when our, um, official part of the day begins. But then the, the all-day schedule's also there. And board members are welcome to, you're welcome to go to any of those events that you want to and that your schedule allows. Any questions on that? And then I don't know if we have it in writing, Joyce. Well, and also you'll see, uh, the Rutherford County Authors that we get every year, which, that, those are, that's a very good project. And then another piece of paper. Mr. Gill's-
Sorry.
Closing down shop, that's all right. We, yeah, I know, I hooked you up there. Reminder on two upcoming meetings. On the sixteenth, Monday, we'll, um, have a discussion and potentially a decision on our director's search. That would certainly be my hope, uh, to do it as soon as we can and while it's all fresh in our minds. Now, if we can't decide, then we can't decide, and we'll figure out what to do at that stage. But, uh, but the, that'll be our goal going into the meeting on the sixteenth. And then on April twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday, we'll have our second and I would think probably last budget meeting unless something strange happens. So for the twenty, that's your thinking too, right, Harry? So on the twenty-fifth is if you have comments you wanna make about the budget or things you wanna add or subtract or move. Again, there's not a whole lot of room to do that this year because we're not really adding items in the way that sometimes we've done in the past. But that'll, that'll be your opportunity to ask questions or make adjustments to our budget proposal. Are they clear on the program? Anybody have any questions, comments on that?
So the sixteenth at five o'clock?
Yes, sir, sixteenth at five and the twenty-fifth at five. And you should have a, well, I don't know, do they, they might not have a sheet, I'm sorry. Yeah, but Monday, the sixteenth at five for the director. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth at five for the budget. Those are the two dates. Joyce will email a reminder today. Okay, any other business?
Mr. Chairman, we have some materials I wanted to ask you to, to-
I did mention that, yeah. The, the writers' project that we have each year. And then there, I believe there's an invitation to the, uh, what? I know it's gotta be on there somewhere. Yeah, Tuesday, April tenth. They have an event at Siegel Mill. Thank you. Other questions or comments? We will see you Thursday night, and we are adjourned.